I'd like to ask everybody to please stand for the pledge. And remain standing for a moment of silence for our important serving throughout the world. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to our village board meeting for January 24, 2019. First up, I'd like to ask for a motion to accept our minutes from our meeting held January 10, 2019.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor? Dez, can you please read abstract 16?
Abstract 16 contains vouchers 181425 through 181503 and totals $947,351.77.
Thank you.
Mike? You can sit over here. You're Mike, but he's Mike also. I'll call you mayor.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve a budget modification for fiscal year 2018-2019, water and sewer funds per Heard-Potkins memo dated January 10, 2019.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve fire department equipment request 2019-02 totaling approximately $216.88 for the purchase of a carbon dioxide detector and iPad accessories for ladder fire.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to appoint Craig Brady to the zoning board of appeals to fill a vacancy that was created by the departure of trustee Jacque Camaza.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Go ahead, Andrew.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Congratulations.
Old business. Acceptance of bids for the flood barrier project. Dez Re, can you please read the bid?
The bid notice was printed in the Times-Tower Record on December 3, 2018, and the bid opening was held on December 19, 2018. The following bids were received. Tam Enterprises of Goshen, New York in the amount of $83,311. Cypress Co. Industries of Neptune, New Jersey in the amount of $97,212. Malum Enterprises of Monroe, New York in the amount of $98,000. And Rapid Pump and Meter of Patterson, New Jersey in the amount of $158,435.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This project is being funded by FEMA through a hazard mitigation provision of the disaster assistance program in connection with damage sustained during Hurricane Irene. This project was also previously bid in March 2017 with only one bid received in the amount of $151,881. An interior double door barrier was removed from the bid, and the project now receives four bids. Engineer Lindsay submitted correspondence stating he believes the little bit is a competitive price for the work. So with that, I'm going to ask for a motion to accept the bid of Tam Enterprises in the amount of $83,311 for the maintenance building and well number one flood barrier project.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, last meeting, we had a couple of resolutions about streetlights for Ninniger and Route 32 connected with the construction project down at the 131 interchange down there. It's still under review by attorney, so those two issues will be tabled tonight. That's the resolution, streetlights on Ninniger Road and the resolution, streetlights on Route 32. These items are going to be tabled for further review by council. So they should be ready for our next meeting, February 14, which is Valentine's Day. So if anybody has nothing to do on Valentine's Day, they could come here and spend the evening with us. New business. Schedule a public hearing. The village was notified by the town clerk that the town attorney informed her that the town of Woodbury cannot issue peddling or soliciting permits in the boundaries of the village of Woodbury and Harriman. Therefore, the village will need to adopt the law regulating these types of permits. So Dez Re, could you please read the resolution?
Yes. Whereas the village board of trustees wishes to set a time and place for a public hearing to consider the adoption of introductory local law 1 of 2019 entitled Peddling and Soliciting, and whereas the village board hereby determines that it will be lead agency with respect to the review of the proposed local law in accordance with SECRA, as no other agencies have the authority to approve it, and whereas the village board hereby preliminary classifies the action as an unlisted action under SECRA, now therefore hereby resolved that a public hearing shall be held by the village board in order to receive comments and suggestions regarding the proposed local law to review any potential adverse environmental impacts of the proposed local law on February 14, 2019 at 7:00 PM at the village hall located at 455 Route 32 in Highland Mills, and be it resolved that the office of the village clerk is authorized and directed to cause public notice of said hearing to be given as provided by law.
Thank you.
Now, that's fun Valentine's Day stuff.
Yeah, I can't beat it. Okay, could I have a motion to adopt the resolution as read?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have another resolution. It's a night of resolutions. Dennis Lynch has-
It's January. You make resolutions in January.
I haven't kept them.
Right?
I was eating cupcakes, but... Dennis Lynch has left the law firm that the village uses for certain legal matters. We have been advised that it would be in the best interest of the village of Woodbury to clarify which firm the village will be represented by on certain current or pending litigation. In addition, Mr. Lynch represents the village of South Blooming Grove on a specific matter, and is also advised by council that the village should have separate counsel. So Dez Re, could you please read the resolution?
Whereas pursuant to the municipal corporation agreement executed by several municipalities in Orange County in October of 2015, the village of Woodbury participated in municipal consortium to challenge certain annexation proceedings initiated by the village of Kyrstol. And whereas the participating municipalities retained the services of Brian Cave LLP to represent the participating municipalities in litigation commencing in the Supreme Court of the county of Orange under index number 2015-7410. And whereas the village of Woodbury's legal representative in such proceedings was the law firm of Feric Lynch McCartney and Nugent, P LLC, now known as Feric Nugent McCartney, P LLC, with the village's special representative of the firm being Dennis Lynch, Esquire. And whereas Dennis Lynch is no longer a member of Feric Nugent McCartney, P LLC, and is now of counsel to the law firm of Blanchard and Wilson, LLP, and Mr. Lynch now represents the village of Blooming, South Blooming Grove, as legal representative in the above referenced matter. And whereas the participating municipalities in the above referenced litigation each had a separate legal representative to advise the municipality and represent each municipality's interests with respect to the above referenced litigation. And whereas the village of Woodbury wishes to continue to have separate legal representative in said proceedings, now therefore it is hereby resolved... Uh-oh, something disappeared. That the village board hereby determines that it wishes to continue the services of Feric Newton McCartney, P LLC, as designated representative in the Orange County Supreme Court matter under index number 2015-7410, with Brian Nugent being assigned as representative to the village, and that the resolution shall be effective immediately.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good job.
Thank you.
Motion to adopt the resolution as read?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Do a roll call?
No.
No. You want to do a roll call?
I can if you want me to.
All in favor?
Aye.
No, have to. It's up to you.
Okay, notification has been received from the planning board of their declaration as lead agency on the application before them known as Premium Outlet Partners, LP. Site plan, special permit and architectural review application known on a tax map as So I'd like a motion to authorize the village clerk to respond to the notice on behalf of the village board that they consent to the planning board serving as lead agency for this application.
I'll make the motion.
And I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, the village is moving forward with the expansion of the village hall to add two bays for the fire department and proper office space for the building department and village offices. Dez Re, could you please read the resolution?
Whereas the village of Woodbury is undertaking and funding an expansion of village hall in the fire department at village hall, and whereas the village hall expansion project is subject to SECRA, and whereas the village of Woodbury Board of Trustees is the sole involved agency because the project is exempt from zoning and not subject to planning board approval based on the balancing of public interests considering the municipal land use involved in the public benefits that will result from an expanded village hall and fire department. And whereas the village of Woodbury Board of Trustees has caused a short environmental assessment form for the proposed expansion to be prepared by Burke, Mealy, Golden and Norton, LLP, and whereas the village board has reviewed the EAF for the proposed village hall expansion and identified and taken a hard look at the relevant areas of environmental concern, and now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the village of Woodbury hereby, one, assumes lead agency status with respect to the review of the proposed village hall expansion under SECRA and Part 617 of its implementing regulations; two, classifies the action as an unlisted action; and three, makes a determination of significance of a negative declaration, i.e. that the proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts, and adopts an annexed negative declaration.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to adopt the resolution as read?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Well, that concludes our business for this evening. I just want to let everybody know that we will be having a work session after we adjourn the meeting. Everybody's welcome to stay for that work session, and we will be also filming it. So with that, I'm going to go out to the public. Anybody in the first row, second row, actually?
Sandy Priglione. I just have two quick questions on the EAF for the village hall expansion. Under, it's on page 2 of 3, question 13. The question with regard to wetlands or water bodies. It was answered yes. Excuse me. But it didn't identify or advise the extent of alterations in square footage or acreage. Now, I know on the mapper, it said that it was information for wetlands and water bodies in that area are incomplete. So I'm wondering, are there wetlands on this property?
I really can't answer that. I know that the engineering firm was out here, and they did drilling and things like that. So I'm assuming maybe they found something, but to my knowledge, where this is being built, it is totally dry.
Okay.
There could be wetlands in the back. I really can't answer that. I'm not aware of any wetlands.
Okay, and who was it that prepared the EAF? I saw the signature, but I couldn't...
Rick Golden with the assistance of Mr. Dupew, who was the village's engineer on this issue, and the architect firm, which I don't know how to pronounce their name because it's a Lavori.
Okay, I can look it up. Okay, thank you.
Just being honest. I would totally butcher it.
Anybody else in the second row? Anybody in the third row?
Craig Brady, Highland Mills. First, thank you for, maybe it's condolences for the appointment to the ZBA. Appreciate that. Offering a suggestion, I'd like you to consider, and it probably might be a village code that needs to be amended, regarding notice for public hearings and things like that, public notice. Many people no longer get Times Tower Record. It would be really useful, I think, if everything that required a public notice were posted on the village website. Just have a page on the village website. It is?
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you. Notices of public hearings is by state law, not local law, so we have to follow the state requirements. And all the documents that are on a village board meeting are on the village website. So if you go to the documents for tonight's meeting, you'll see the law there.
Sure.
Right.
But I'm speaking like, public notices for the meetings that are announced, that are posted in Times Tower Record, for example. Are those also posted on the website?
They are on the website with the meeting documents. They're also posted on the bulletin boards in the back of the room, and they're posted in the newspaper pursuant to law.
Maybe it's me trying to find them, you know?
It's always under meeting documents. So the meeting is today, the public hearing, the local law is on there now. The local law will remain on there until the next meeting. And the minutes will be on there as well, and it's also in the minutes.
So maybe just an easier way to link to them? A suggestion, I don't know. Because sometimes they're hard to find.
And I get that. We get that on both sides. Like, some people say things are perfect, some people say things are hard. It's kind of like a adjustment.
It's a balancing act.
Yeah, it is.
No problem.
Well, we can certainly always improve our messaging, so certainly take a look at it.
Yep.
We could, we could look at other possible ways to get messages out. I could think of a few, but unfortunately, they cost money. But, you know, if that's what we need to do, that's what we need to do. Anybody else in the third row? Anybody at all? Okay, with that, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn, and I could...
Do you want to check the board?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I didn't really think that anything was...
Okay.
I'll check.
All right, Chuck.
Actually, he told us we didn't have anything to say.
Jesse, do you have anything? Andrew?
Yes, sir.
Got anything?
Yes. So I'm sure my fellow board members will expound on it further, but I just wanted to commend the highway department personnel for a job well done with this last storm. I wanted to make mention that Monday was Dr. Martin Luther King Day across the United States. Dr. King was best known for advancing civil rights through nonviolent activism. So Martin Luther King's words were spoken with hope that the future for African Americans... Oh, I shouldn't stop tapping. Okay. I'm like, what does this mean? What is this? We would be brighter, for African Americans would be brighter, but moreover, that they would finally experience the equality that every human being deserves. At the same time, Dr. King's words inspired the entire human race to strive for harmony among all people. His tragic death shocked the nation, but his words and his dedication to equality continue and inspire generations, young and old, even myself. So thank you.
Jesus, do you have anything?
No. Can't follow that. Well done.
Agreed.
Dez, you have anything?
I just want to announce a couple of events that are upcoming in our community on February 3, Super Bowl Sunday, since we're not watching the Packers play. There will be a pancake breakfast here, like there usually is, from 8:00 AM. I'm a true fan, Joe, right? From 8:00 AM to noon, $10 per person, kids eat free. And then on February 5, the Chamber of Commerce is hosting a, I'm sorry, the Pancake Breakfast Funds will, of course, go to raise money for the John P. Burke Memorial Scholarship Fund. And then on February 5, the Chamber of Commerce is hoping a sip and/or taste in paint at the Savory Grill. It's $40 from 6:00 to 9:00, and you do have to sign up ahead of time, and you have to pay in advance, and we're capped at 40, so there will be a waitlist when we hit that mark. If you have any questions, you can reach me at Village Hall or Town Hall about either of those events.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want to wrap this up by saying that, you know, as Andrew pointed out about the highway department doing a great job, we're very fortunate here in Woodbury because we have great employees that do a great job. And I know everybody realizes the highway department's out there working because they see the results, but also the water and sewer department was also out there doing things. They had a water main break yesterday on John's Drive, and they were out there fixing it. And the highway department, even though it wasn't snowing, they were out and about all day today, making sure the areas that flood in town, that usually flood, for example, Park Avenue didn't, they were keeping their eye on it all day. Matter of fact, the work they've been doing since the last flooding we had down there paid off. They removed a lot of debris from the Woodbury Creek there, so we were very lucky today. We just had one problem with one of our sewer pump stations, but other than that, we haven't, we've kind of escaped, you know, a pretty bad flooding event because a lot of our areas, especially in Westchester and other parts of Orange County, did experience some flooding. So again, I'd like to congratulate our employees. They're always out there doing a great job for us. And with that, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn. But wait, I just want to say one thing. Again, I was about to say, unless I said it, I forget, I'm very forgetful. Yeah, that too. I was, and you weren't. We are having a work session after. Everybody's welcome to stay.
You said it.
And we're going to film it also. So with that, motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and good night. And if you want to stay, that's great. Mike, we're going to do it this way tonight. You can sit there, we'll sit there. Yeah, we all got mics. Yeah, Mike, since you were here last time, we have two new board members. So Mike, we have two new board members. We have Andrew, Jacque Camaza, whatever.
Jacque Camaza.
Guys, guys, guys.
That's all right. And we also have, yeah, we also have Jesus.
Nice to see you, Mike.
Andrew?
I'm sorry, when I'm sick, I won't sing today. I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm so sorry. And Jesus.
Yeah, I think it might be easier. If anybody wants to come down or whatever, but we're going to try to do it this way because we have the mics and we could all...
Let them know before we start.
How are you, buddy?
How are you? Really sorry to hear that. Did you have the flu?
No, I wasn't the flu. He got very...
My wife and I were both, both over the weekend, my wife and I. She's actually still sick. I'm a lot better. She's going to stay in my chest for quite a while.
Take a picture. My antibiotics, yes.
Congratulations.
If you stand sideways, it's...
Yes.
Some ex-board members were rude. We could tell you, but we'd have to kill you.
I was trying to be out there every other day. Yeah, it's tough for his kids. I condemn him for his hand. I always...
I did as well.
Yeah. I mean, I was on my way. I was in Texas, I was going to go up, but no, he's...
Hello, hello.
Thanks.
Is that really what you'd say to somebody? Have fun on the village floor! Don't leave, all the plants will die.
All right, how do we get started?
See you later, buddy. Bye, Neil.
All right. Mike, the last time we were here, we were kind of depending on your knowledge base to help us through this because we're like, you know, novices in the wireless game here. And so, as I said, we depend on you to, you know, guide us in the right way to make this. And I believe the last time, you were going to put the final touches on the code and the law, and we're going to try to possibly schedule a public hearing in the near future, maybe at our next meeting.
Right, well, thank you for that and that intro. Tonight, I wanted to come in to give you guys an update of where we're at. We are now down to the administrative and finalization. And I also wanted to talk through a timeline. I also know and welcome two new members to the village board. If there's any background that I could give tonight or reiteration, and of course, any questions. The last couple of work sessions have been great. You guys have given me some very important feedback. I may be a quote-unquote "expert" in this area, but you're an expert, obviously, in the village and the zoning and the planning of what's going on, and that all plays into, I think, the forecasting in the future for wireless. So what I wanted to go over real quick is, in speaking today with Dez Re a little bit, this is just, I think, a game plan or an outline for where we're at right now. Been working with Rick and Kelly's office, obviously, there's a legal eye that needs to go in. When we start adding things like restrictions or limitations, processes of the applications, whether it's something going into a residential area or a right-of-way or a shopping hotel zone, that certainly needs a legal eye. As you're well aware of, the federal mandates, they do handcuff municipalities. I don't think, I don't have a problem saying that, and I think most municipalities recognize that. With that said, there was a very significant ruling that came out in September of 2018. I talked a little bit about it at the last work session. That's actually under a legal challenge by several cities in the US, but the punchline of what that ruling includes, addressing fifth generation or 5G as we hear it. It may not be very important to the village of Woodbury based on your situation. However, it will be here at one time, and certainly it's a big deal in metropolitan areas. We start hearing about connected vehicles, autonomous vehicles, Internet of Things, paying everything on your phone. And I spoke about this prior, it's not just about making a phone call anymore with your device. It's not just about not having a landline in your home and relying on your cellphone. There's so many other services that are coming through. So this new ruling in September is really gearing up the industry to deploy fifth generation devices. And those likely are not going to be new cell towers, and you have about five or six of them within the village right now. They will be a part of the game plan, but the forecast really is looking for lower power, smaller antennas, and quite frankly, the way the carriers get to that is working in the right-aways, using existing infrastructure like telephone poles, utility poles, traffic lights, signs. And it's certainly leveraged for them, again, because a lot of that is excluded. If it's on a state road or a county road, municipalities may or may not have as much leverage for the review of these things. So the code update- There's also clarity on timing of application reviews, meaning an application comes into municipality, either a 60-day or 90-day timeframe. Years ago, it was called the shot clock ruling, back in 2009. That's been refined a little bit. Importantly, there's also some suggestions by FCC on fees. So this is something that we spoke about in a prior work session, the idea about an application fee to process. And what if there is an installation in a village right-of-way, an annual fee or an inspection? The village has run across this for the first time last year, when an infrastructure company is proposing a small cell node on an existing telephone pole near Woodbury Common. We reviewed that on behalf of the planning board, and I know you're certainly aware of that one also. And I think that was maybe the impetus for these code updates. Is this more to come? Probably is. It may not be next month or later in 2019, but it probably is something that's coming. But there's some interesting fees that are laid out by the FCC. I personally don't think that they're appropriate to Woodbury. So we're, one of the finishing touches is to, you know, kind of review how the building department views fees for all sorts of projects. If there's village equipment on a telephone pole also, considerations that you might have to work around a piece of equipment, or might have to, you know, just be cognizant of if there's anything near the ground. One thing outside of these code updates, but it certainly will be mentioned, is, again in the September ruling, which went into effect in January, January 14th, a week ago from this past Monday, there is a April timeframe for municipalities to lay out a schedule of quote-unquote "aesthetic standards." And that's something we're certainly working across all of our municipal clients. Again, this is, the September ruling is challenged, but this is going to be an important part of it. The idea that the carriers want clarity when they come into municipality, what's the fee schedule going to be? What's the process and the application timing going to be? And then, well, what are the aesthetic standards that are preferred by that municipality? Maybe colors, maybe a type of cell tower, or a type of pole on a utility. So those are really, the fees, the aesthetics, the application process and timing, and small cells are, if I had to boil it down, those are the four significant things. And I think the timing is very good here to go into, to go into code updates. So as far as timeframes go, and I'll put these into the minutes that I'll hand off to Desiree tomorrow. Next week, we'll be finalizing and getting in front of Rick and Kelly legally, and Dennis Lindsay from an engineering point of view, the final version of local law. Rick, Kelly, and Dennis have been working with me over time on this, so they're aware of how the code is coming together. We're looking at February 7th to finalize everything with everyone's comments. And we feel that on February 14th, I think that's the next village board meeting, we'd be able to set a public hearing date. I personally would love to do the 28th, but we'll have to just finalize the newspaper notice on that, if it's a five-to-10-day notice, or if it's a 10-to-20-day notice. I think that the public hearing would be ready to go on February 28th or March 14th. Yeah, yeah, so it's just something that we'll confirm with that. So gearing up to that meeting, we'll be working with Rick and Kelly's office on resolution for the public hearing. We'll be working with Desiree on the notice, of course, getting the final document, clean document together, and then also the GML referrals, which I'll confirm what exactly is needed to be done. So we've had some of those conversations this week. So I think we're getting very close to this, and I'm looking forward to coming in when that public hearing is scheduled and open to, if it's in this room, perhaps give a PowerPoint presentation that would walk through that. Yeah, I look forward to doing that. There's really a lot to put out there, and I'll try to use some visuals to go along with my monotone voice. But that's really what I had tonight, and certainly for the members and the new members as well. If there are any overarching questions that you might have at this point, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
By all means, I can. So I just have a couple questions. And one is about, there will be some kind of fee schedule, I assume, and also, I believe we have to have the law in our possession. I forget the timeline. You could run that by Desiree, like in advance, before we could schedule a public hearing.
Right.
It's like five days, a certain amount of days, we have to have it prior to public hearing.
Prior to when you schedule the public hearing?
I can't remember if it's prior to the public hearing or prior to scheduling the public hearing.
I'll make sure to check that out.
Right. Anybody else? Andrew?
No, not right now.
Jesus?
I'm good.
I'm good. We've reviewed this thoroughly, and I look forward to the final draft.
Yeah, yeah, I look forward to getting that in. I think one other thing I wanted to mention, and this is not based on the direction from you guys, but on my professional judgment, in the day-to-day, I do interface with carrier attorneys reviewing applications. We have one application here with the building department. I did speak to them sort of off the record, very unofficially. They're aware that there are code updates going on, and with this FCC ruling, getting their take a little bit of how they're viewing it. I mean, they're, that's one side of the coin, obviously. I've gotten some pretty good feedback from them, and I do expect them to participate in the process and get comments in. So I think the, it'll be interesting to hear what kind of comments we get back. We certainly don't want to put the village board in any kind of legal position. That's why working together with Rick and Kelly is important, just to vet those things and our interpretations of it. And certainly, the fee schedule is important, and you guys had made that clear to me. And certainly, the RF emissions are important, and Tim, I remember you brought that up a while back, especially with fifth generation, exactly what that means, so we want to keep that tight. I think those things are tight in the existing ordinance right now, and we want to carry those through.
So the fifth generation can't run through the O4, and those cell towers that were already erected for the four? They have to have separate ones?
No, no, not necessarily, and I think that's a very good point. The existing infrastructure that's out there, cell towers with antennas, just like we're seeing now, those will be upgraded. There could be some new frequencies that are gifted or licensed to the carriers. So those towers certainly will not become obsolete. They're always going to be part of the mix, but they'll probably be upgraded, but supplemented. So rather than the four or five towers, maybe not, again, maybe not in Woodbury initially, but, you know, looking at supplemental antennas, not about coverage footprint, but it's about capacity and bandwidth and speed, and that's what 5G is really all about. Yeah, some of the things you read, if you see things, you know, people sitting in the backseat doing internet as their car is driving them into Manhattan, and then getting out, and then sending their car home, and then come back to pick them up. I don't know what this all means. I don't think anyone does. But these are some of the things that are, that are out there. The FCC ruling gives an interesting preamble on all this, and a lot of it is based on economics, and keeping the U.S. competitive with other countries who are, also have the race to 5G. And the big part, and the impetus of that ruling, is really looking to how deployment could happen. And municipalities are oftentimes viewed as a roadblock. So there's, they're trying to strike that balance, and it'll be interesting to see how this legal challenge of that September ruling works out.
Yeah, I don't think our intention is to be a roadblock, but our intention is to protect, you know, the residents of Woodbury, their rights.
Absolutely.
You know, and hopefully, we can come to some kind of agreement that, you know, the FCC can agree to, and the carriers can agree to, and we can agree to. I mean, you know, we're all for progress, but, you know, we do feel that, you know, residents do have a right, and that needs to be protected to a certain degree. So that's why we're trying to update the code, so at least our code is kind of conforms to the requirements of the federal government, but it also allows for some protection for our residents.
Absolutely. And something coming out of a group of five members in Washington, D.C., is not perfect for every place, based on topography, based on character, so that's everything that we're putting into it. So we're really at the end of the process now, and we look forward now to scheduling that meeting.
And nobody wants to spend the next 10 years in litigation over this stuff either. But we do want to, you know, protect our residents, especially their health and welfare, you know? And we also want to make sure that, you know, our building department, when they have to go out and do inspections or things of that nature, that we're reimbursed for that, because we shouldn't have to subsidize the carriers for their, you know, business.
Absolutely, yep. That's about all I had tonight, unless there's anyone else. You'll be getting some stuff from me in the near future.
No, all right. I look forward to the public hearing. So just so everybody knows, we'll be probably scheduling that public hearing on the 14th of February, and hopefully, we will have it on the 28th. And it'll be an opportunity for people to come out and learn what's happening and what's going on in the world, so...
Great. We'll look forward to it.
Thanks, Mike. All right, with that, good night, everyone, and thank you for coming. And Jeff, I think we're done. Thank you.